All right. Hello. Good evening. Welcome to this September 21st, 2020 meeting of your West Orange Board of Education. Mr. Calabano.
Roll call. Mr. Alper.
Present.
Mrs. Marklinger.
Here.
Mr. Rothstein.
Here.
Mrs. Trick Scales.
Here.
And Mrs. Tonnercliff.
Present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Notice, meeting, please take notice, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided for in the following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 7th and September 9th, 2020. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said, notice was posted in the lobby of the Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Great. Thank you. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed and public meeting minutes of September 10th?
So moved.
And seconded.
All right, Mr. Calabano.
Mr. Marklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tonnercliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trick Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right. Dr. Cascon, what's new?
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Good evening, members of the Board, colleagues and members of the community who have joined us here tonight for tonight's Board of Education meeting. I just want to wish everybody a, you know, in advance, a successful second week of school. We, and I'm sure you had a beautiful weekend, this weekend, two glorious days to follow up on a successful start to the school year. That is not to say that it was not without some wrinkles and some bumps here and there. But in a few moments, I'm going to ask Mrs. DeMendez to share out on some of the data points, not only as they relate to attendance, but also to the parent and student survey, which we sent out on Thursday of last week. We received approximately 1,000 responses to that, and so got a pretty good sample size and gleaned a lot of very useful information from that as to areas on which we need to continue to focus, to continue to enhance what we're doing. But most of all, I just want to commend our community. I'd like to commend our families and our students. I think when you look at the attendance data from the first day, it was really a testament to your engagement. You know, reviewing the materials that we sent home, understanding how to get into the platform and doing it and having your kids do it, and to our students the same. Really an amazing achievement for that first day. And I think we had something like 80 out of 2,000 students that were not on platform at the high school alone, which is a good attendance day when we're in brick and mortar. So again, thank you to our families. Thank you to our students for your engagement and commitment. Thank you to our staff. I spent, and our administration, I spent, you know, a number of days getting out into the buildings, being able to interact with teachers, watching them operate on the virtual platform, really giving it their 100% to work to make that experience as engaging as possible for students. I was at Kelly Elementary School today for a number of hours and had the, really the privilege of working from the library and really just kind of being able to observe the library media specialist at Kelly School deliver synchronous related arts instruction in the afternoon. And I was just so impressed with her energy and really, I couldn't see the kids, but hearing them engaged, answering questions. She had them kind of going out into their house, retrieving certain objects and almost kind of doing like a virtual scavenger hunt and bringing things back and incorporating them into the lesson. So that was a great way to keep them engaged and active and, you know, not necessarily focused on the screen. And this is week two. We'll continue to improve. We'll continue to get better. But all in all, I think it was a successful start. I have two colleagues here with me today, Mrs. DeMendez, Mrs. Gogarty, who are going to provide some updates. And I'm going to close the superintendent's report with a detailed update on the status of our ventilation remediations and with some more specifics as to the timeline, which I will publish later in the week in a written return to school document for public consumption. Because I know that that is obviously on the minds of many of our community members. So with that, I would first turn it over to Mrs. DeMendez to provide some data and some updates relative to the opening school.
Emily, you're muted. Sorry. Thank you. I think this week, as Dr. Cascon mentioned, was a very positive one. Overall, our staff in their survey for day one responded back that, you know, it's going exceptionally well. 80% of the staff feels that it's going exceptionally well and another 14% says that there are some things that we're working on, but they have some strategies to really move the needle in terms of instruction. When we think about how many of our students are in attendance, 84% of the staff reported that 90 to 100% of all of their students logged into their calls and another 10% said that 80 to 90%. So we had a very nice attendance, all things considered, for the first week of school. The same thing with joining Google Classrooms. It was in the 95 percentile of students who were able to join their Google Classrooms and another 82% students who were able to join their Zoom and another 10% who, 80 to 90% joined their Zoom. So again, the attendance was good for week one. We are clear that there are some things that we need to respond to in terms of some of the parent feedback. Our parent feedback was also very positive in terms of how did it go this week? It was 50% exceptionally well, no issues, and another 42%, some areas to work on, but we have some strategies. So overall, what were the some areas that parents were talking about? I think the top was Zoom and Chromebook. It was, let's think about the Chromebook and how it integrates with Zoom. And particularly when teachers share their screen, there were some blackouts and we're getting booted out of a call. So those were probably the top two things that when we looked at the 964 responses that parents were saying that that was a number one concern. I think a second concern, if we were ranking them, it was really thinking about how we're using Fridays asynchronously. There was a lot of ask for us to consider using Friday synchronously. For our upper grades, the parents commented that maybe we should have a longer day, more than the half day in hours, right? And then for our younger grades, the parents were saying it was either just write or no more screen time, right? So thinking about the two different grade spans and how the day may look differently for our high school students versus our younger students. Another area that was talked about was YouTube. Maybe that's a distraction for students and students having access. We are exploring the idea of using EdPuzzle in order for us to be able to upload the YouTube right into EdPuzzle. We want to see how that works and experiment that with that for a little bit before we really push it out there as the alternative. But we are hearing the feedback around YouTube and some of our parents that would like that not to be there as a distractor. And then, you know, screen time, how do we think about screen time? I think the elementary parents overall in the responses were pleased that the breaks were there, the movement was integrated, that we are using different ways to integrate print or as Dr. Cascon, the example we gave with the student going into the home and looking for things and coming back. So it's not just pure screen time, but there are certain parents who would still like us to consider screen time even more. So if we're thinking about our 984 responses, I think they fell into those buckets. And we are working toward, you know, answering them on our FAQ. We do the same with our staff on their responses. We're answering them on the FAQ and then pushing out any strategies that we have to address the situations that are arising. One of the, one of those would be for our teachers, really enabling the waiting room for any of the Zoom calls. Enabling the waiting room just assures us that no one's entering the classroom that shouldn't be there. So the teachers will admit the students one by one. So that's something that we did push out to all of our staff this week. And again, that just provides an added layer of monitoring for who enters the Zoom call. Another thing that we pushed out to teachers was the use of the chat. There is a way, just as Lauren, when she's facilitating these webinars or board meetings, right? There's an ability to enable the chat or disable the chat. So now we're just, we pushed out some instructional strategies for staff to really use the chat only when you pose a question to the students. And then if not, then just disable the chat and they can, you know, do that easily, on off, on off. That way, the chat feature is monitored and all of our chat can be saved. The teachers have that on an automatic save my chat, so it does go to the computer. So if for whatever reason we needed to go back and take a look at our chats, that can be done. So also from the breakout rooms, there is no private chats in breakout rooms, right? The chat that exists always goes out to the main session, so teachers are very well able to monitor that. So I think overall, we've gotten positive responses from our staff, positive responses from parents. Great attendance. We understand that there are definitely concerns around the technology. That's to be expected since we're 100% virtual, right? So we'll keep working at those issues that are presenting themselves. We'll work on those. We'll keep reporting out, answering on FAQ, sending out strategies for addressing them, and I think that's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. DeMendez. And this time I'll turn the microphone over to, after a quick preface to Mrs. Gogarty. So Mrs. Gogarty Fitzgerald, Director of Special Services, has been working with her team. We have heard the calls and the pleas, if you will, of some of our special needs parents to expedite the timeline for getting some of our specialized populations in. And that's exactly what Mrs. Gogarty Fitzgerald and her team are working on. She's going to provide some updates with regard to the commencement of onsite child study team evaluations, as well as the timeline for the commencement of onsite related services and bringing some of our self-contained populations in. So Mrs. Gogarty Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Dr. Cascon. So as Dr. Cascon shared, I'm going to be providing some specific updates as they relate to special education. I'm going to start with in-person evaluations. So our child study team and related service providers have resumed in-person evaluations effective today. We have approximately 120 students that were in process, so either have been started since March or in the process of an evaluation or have been signed up for an initial evaluation. So we recognize that this is a priority. Our teams have been given a list by building of the students who require an evaluation. So they are working on reviewing that list, reaching out to parents and scheduling evaluations. I did send a letter out to parents and guardians today, both in English and Spanish, just informing them of this information, as well as outlining our protocol as it relates to the screening procedures, PPE, et cetera, for the evaluation process. In terms of IEP meetings and related services, currently our IEP meetings and related services are both being provided virtually. As Dr. Cascon shared, we are working to make a shift to in-person instruction. I will say, just in an effort to be transparent, I'm going to be speaking in more general terms this evening as we are in the process of communicating this information to staff specifically for those who are involved in assisting us to return, you know, students back for in-person instruction. So with that being said, I'm not going to be sharing the specifics in terms of programs because I would like to give, you know, the opportunity for us to share that with the staff members who will be involved with that process first. So we have, we have developed an outline in terms of how we're going to begin transitioning students back, particularly those in our self-contained programs, beginning the week of October 12th. So Mrs. Ribero and I facilitated a meeting last Friday, September 18th, with a group of teachers, you know, who will be probably the first cohort of, you know, those involved that we're going to be returning to school. So we do have three additional meetings scheduled this week with more teachers as well as power professionals to go over that process with them. I did inform the child study team members and our related service providers of our plan in writing. So we did have a meeting with them on September 10th. I did not share this information at that meeting, but we do have follow-up meetings next week where I'm going to be sharing more in-depth information with child study team members and related service providers. So with that being said, you know, we will be looking to shift the related services to in-person when we begin returning the students back for in-person instruction. So we haven't finalized all of the details, but we will communicate that information as we move forward. So, you know, as we're planning to return the students for in-person instruction, there's multiple considerations and areas that we're really working on. First and foremost, the safety. So we want to make sure that the classrooms that we're utilizing have proper ventilation when we're returning the students. And I know Dr. Cascon is going to share a little bit more about that, you know, when he speaks. We did, back in the summer, early on in the summer, we placed orders for all of our protective equipment that would be needed. So to date, we've received desk barriers specifically for classrooms where we have staff members that are working in very close proximity to students for extended periods of time throughout the day. We ordered face shields for all of our staff members as well as clear mouth masks. The face shields were received late August. We just received the clear mouth masks last Thursday afternoon. An order was also placed for disposable gowns for our nursing staff as well as classrooms that, you know, again, require staff to work in close proximity to students. As an example, you know, students who may require assistance in the bathroom, we have disposable isolation gowns for staff to wear. So at this time, we're in the process of preparing those items to be delivered to the classrooms. So we want to make sure that all of the classrooms are equipped with the protective equipment that would be needed before we return students for in-person instruction. Another area is class size. So when, you know, when we're looking to transition the students back, students will be assigned a cohort, so they'll have, you know, a cohort as well as designated days that they'll be coming in. So Mrs. Ribero, who is the supervisor within the department, and I are working with building administrators as well as teachers to identify those cohorts. So we do recognize that some parents and guardians have opted for their child to remain virtual when we do return in person. So we do have to take that into account as well. So certainly, once the cohorts are identified, we will look at power professional needs, you know, depending upon student IPs, to make sure that we also arrange for the power professionals to be in the buildings to support the students, as well as for those who will remain virtual as well. So as I shared before, we're in the process of communicating the timeline and the plan with staff. So we recognize that, you know, once we share this information, there may be staff members who are unable to return and may have to take a leave. So then we're, you know, we'll have to make those arrangements for any staff member who is unable to return on the dates that we've outlined. In terms of communication, we are working on drafting letters to the parents and guardians specifically for those students or programs that we're looking to return sooner than that November 9th timeline. And the letter will share information, you know, specific to the plan for returning the students to in-person instruction. Additionally, we'll be asking case managers to assist us in reaching out to parents, guardians, connecting with them just to make sure that they receive the letter and they're aware that we're looking to resume that in-person instruction as well. So, you know, as I previously shared, even the case managers at this time don't have the specifics of this. We are meeting with them next Tuesday and Wednesday. We have multiple meetings set up. So we're still in the process of rolling out that communication piece, which is why, you know, I'm speaking more generally this evening. And one of the last areas is transportation. So once we identify the cohorts, we'll be communicating that information to transportation so they can begin making arrangements for any student who requires that service per his or her IEP. So as you can see, there's many steps involved in this process. We are continuing to iron out the details and we recognize that there are some unanswered questions which we're continuing to address. But ultimately, we are looking forward to beginning the shift to in-person instruction in some capacity.
Thank you, Mrs. Gogarty Fitzgerald.
Thank you.
Mr. Alper, I would just maybe at this time, you know, prior to my ventilation update, maybe just give the board an opportunity to ask questions about these pieces.
Absolutely. Anybody just want to jump in instead of forcing Gary to go first for a change? That'd be nice.
I was actually prepared.
Well, go ahead, that, by all means.
I'm going to sit back and let someone else have the honor of saying.
Here, we'll do it in reverse order. Ms. Tonnercliff.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. On the faculty survey that was sent out, Mrs. DeMendez, you talked about about 14% of the faculty were saying they're working on strategies. What were some, I'd like to know what some of their concerns were, a little more detail and color on that. And then also on the attendance piece for the kids that didn't show up, whether they were in high school or elementary. Can you tell me a little bit about what we're doing as a district to pursue those students and to make sure that they're coming to class and how we're reaching out to them?
Sure. I'll begin with the attendance first. So if a student is not present synchronously, then the teacher is reaching out to the student and the parent via phone. They're also reaching out to their principal to let them know if anyone has not been present consecutively, right? So if we've not been present for two or more days. And then the principal, school counselors, right? There is a team who is really working on reaching out to our parents. We do feel that our attendance for synchronous is rather, it's good, right? It's good. I think the survey, when we took it, it was a day one survey. And so then there you had that gap of students who were not present. There is a very small number of parents who have expressed that they would like to be home with their child to work after they get home from work. It is a very small number, but that does exist and it is represented in the data. And so then those students aren't on the synchronous side of the instruction. With regard to strategies, I think most of our strategies right now around the technology, really learning how to use.
Mrs. DeMendez, I just interrupt you for one moment. I think there's a slight disconnect in the question. I think the survey was administered to parents and students, not teachers, correct? You were referring to the parent-student survey?
I'm sorry. I mean, I misunderstood the question. I thought the question was around attendance and teacher.
Oh, no, this, yes, but I think Mrs. Tonnercliff, and Mrs. Tonnercliff can correct me if I'm wrong. You, in your question, you asked with regard to survey administered to teachers. Was that what you meant to say?
I think it was the first point was that the teacher, because there were two surveys, right? One went to the teachers and one went to the parents and the students.
Right. Okay. So, so specific to the teacher survey?
Yes.
Okay. I just, okay, very good. Mrs. DeMendez?
Yeah. So then if a teacher reported that a student was not present, then the teacher would reach out to the parent. They also let the principal know if there's a consecutive absence because school counselors are reaching out as well, just to make sure that everyone is connected. Because it was a day one survey that went out to the teachers, I think we were able to see that more progressively the students were engaged with the synchronous instruction. And then there's that small percentage of those who aren't present in the synchronous instruction because some parents are choosing to work with their children when they get home versus the child being on synchronously on their own. Does that answer the question?
I think so. So then that brings up another question. So I didn't realize that we had some parents who were choosing that, how, I'm assuming everything is taped and then uploaded so that the student can go through it onto their Google Classroom and click the lecture and the discussion that ensued afterwards. So.
Correct. So then the direct instruction portion of the lesson is recorded. It is uploaded the same day by the end of the day into the Google Classroom. And then students who are absent are able to go into their Google Classroom, view the instruction and do the classwork.
Okay, great.
Mrs. DeMendez, I apologize, Mrs. Tonnercliff. I just wanted to, Mrs. DeMendez, to expand upon attendance, because I think that's a, you know, you're really kind of in that realm right now. And I think it's important to clarify, you know, that for, for a student that opts to not participate in the synchronous session, how that's recorded from an attendance standpoint and dealt with.
Yes. So it is our attendance policy that the student has to be present as they would have to be present if we were in brick and mortar. And so then we are expecting our students to be present for synchronous instruction. Students who are not present for synchronous instruction will be marked absent. They can, however, make up the work and they would have the opportunity to make up the work by going into the Google Classroom, by viewing the content, by submitting their classwork. If they are absent, according to our handbook, right, they have the two days to make up the work or by the time they come to that next class, and so there's a day in between. And so then right now that is the standard.
And just to qualify that answer slightly, is like any, like any set of absences, you know, if a student were to accrue, you know, on the secondary level, particularly the high school level to accrue the maximum number of absences and hence queue out of the class for attendance reasons, there are appeal processes at all levels. So, you know, if there were a hardship, for example, in the home, you know, that were necessitating that, that's certainly something that we would take into consideration, but that would be something we'd want to evaluate on a case-by-case basis with the standard expectation being, just like it would be in brick and mortar, that students are on for the live session.
Correct. And so then at the high school, if a student is absent more than 18 times, then that would be a loss of credit. But the high school has a very robust process for communicating with students and parents. So after the third consecutive absence, then they're, you know, they are reaching out to the parents, they're letting them know. Here is a 369, right? There's a pattern here. Here's three absences. Here's six absences. Here's nine absences. So we're certainly in communication with our parents.
Can I ask another, now you've brought up another question about this, and I'm wondering, because I know the, with the absences, and I'm thinking, you know, this seems like a hardship situation in some cases. We're in the middle of a pandemic and we're trying to educate 7,000 students in the district. And there are, you know, the way we're doing it and with parents who have dual incomes and have to work, those who choose to send their child, you know, we're looking at this for two months. So the child could conceivably have 60 absences by the time we go back to in September, right? So are we applying any sort of automatic, you know, any, any sort of way of being able to get around that? I know it's a, it's a state code, I think, right, for the absences that they have this in there. So I'm just concerned about these students who may be, whose parents want to work with them individually, once they're home, and then racking up, you know, absences. And I know there's some fairly stringent laws about what happens to the parents in those cases as well. So I just want to be sensitive to that.
I think we understand that we can speak to our parents on a case-by-case if there are extenuating circumstances. I think the extenuating circumstances is the, is the key to that conversation, right? What are those circumstances? And if they are indeed those that we need to be flexible and really work with the parents, then, then we can do that on a case-by-case. I prefer my kid not to be on, right? Or I don't, we have to be present. That's where the instruction is taking place. And just as we would need students to be present in school every day, we need the students to be present for the synchronous instruction. But again, if there are extenuating circumstances, we will deal with those on a case-by-case basis. And at the high school where there is policy and state code around absences, then there is an appeals process. And then the extenuating circumstances would be presented during that appeals process.
Thank you. If I can move on to a couple other questions, you had talked a little bit about EdPuzzle. Can you tell me about how that works with the, with YouTube and how that, tell us a little bit more about that?
So I'm not as versed on it as I can be, but I should be, but by the next time I will. EdPuzzle will, in some, allow you to take a video and bring it into that software. So that way, the students do not need to go out externally into YouTube to view it. So it brings it right into EdPuzzle. It's a safe space. It's there. And that's the only thing they can, wouldn't have YouTube ads. And it would give the student the ability to click around and go to a different YouTube. What we have to explore, though, is that if we're using that, can we turn it off and still, you know, have the videos accessible? So we're going to explore that this week, see if that's a good resolve for us. And if not, we'll find a solution in a different way.
Okay. And then for Ms. Gogarty. Okay. And then for Ms. Gogarty, if you could tell me a little bit about, you had talked about the CST in-person started today, and yet you have about 120. I just wondered what the timeline was to complete those? And are these sort of leftover from the spring? Are we still trying to evaluate students that had requested this in the spring or are these new over the summer?
So the evaluations are a combination. Mrs. Tony Cliff, so some are from the spring and then some, we did receive some initial evaluation requests over the summer. So they're from the summer as well. In terms of timelines, these are priorities. So we're trying to move along as quickly as possible. We do have, you know, within the list, I don't have the exact number, but we do have some that are just, there's a few evaluations left or maybe even one. So we just have to wrap those up and then others that require the full evaluation. So it really varies from student to student. But we did meet back, as I had shared on September 10th, with the teams. They were given the list. So they've already, over the last couple of weeks, been scheduling those evaluations with the parents with the understanding we were starting this week because we did have to get the protective equipment out to the teams, which we distributed it last Thursday and Friday.
Okay, great. And then I guess my other question, you had talked about the class size and adding paras. And one of my concerns or one of the things that I was, wanted to know more about is that, do you need additional staff? Like, once you kind of figure out who you have, how is that going to work? Because it sounds like some students may be at home who don't, you know, whose families aren't comfortable with sending the child into school. How is that going to work? And do we need, will that require additional staff? If you have to kind of do a combined class, a hybrid class, where some are virtual and some are in the classroom?
So it doesn't require additional staffing. I'm going to use one of our primary autism classes as an example. We can go up to, we, the maximum class size is six students. So if we look to split the class in half and bring in three students in a cohort model, so three students on Monday and Tuesday, and then another three students on Wednesday and Thursday, we would identify staff to come in and accommodate those, the students that are in person. And then we would have staff that would be able to work virtually with the students who are not in. So it wouldn't require additional staffing. We would just be identifying who would be coming in, you know, who would be reporting to the building and then who might be working with students virtually.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Mr. Alper?
All right, Ms. Merklinger.
So just incidentally, I've heard some concerns over the Friday learning. And I'm just wondering if we've thought, or what are some of the thoughts that we have about possibly changing that to be synchronous? Or is there some guidance we can provide to parents who are finding that they're spending more time having to assist their children during work hours, which we know is, you know, not necessarily the school district's issue, but most folks do have their work schedule based on their child being in school. So I'm just wondering if we've thought, or what some of the ideas we have to help out parents with Friday, with Friday learnings?
So we are certainly hearing the parent suggestions or feedback around Fridays. What we'd like to do is observe the first two weeks and see how these first two weeks pan out. As you know, the first week was really around social emotional learning and routines and procedures. This week, we're now starting content and we are going to get into the actual teaching and the assignments and the homework. So we'd like to see what these first two weeks look like. And then we can come back to the Fridays and absolutely reassess. And if we need to add Fridays, especially at the elementary level, we're able to do that. At least if nothing else, start the day off where the students are being guided by the teachers and just make sure that that instruction or that day is moved along by the teacher. So again, two weeks, observe, and then we'll circle back around to the conversation and see what we need to adjust for the Fridays.
That makes, that makes absolute sense. I know some of the other issues, and you kind of touched on this, was about the technology. And I've heard that we've had some issues with the Zoom meetings being hacked. Have we figured out how to prevent that from happening? Or do we have, we provide, do we have resources on how to prevent that for our teachers so that they're not being disrupted while they're trying to teach our students?
Sure.
Yeah, I can take that one. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Mendez. So yeah, so we, on Friday of last week, Mr. Santiago, our director of technology, met with, and one of his, his team met with a technology team from Zoom. And they, they, they developed several additional security protocol, one of which folks may have noticed today, which required students to sign on and single sign-on for Zoom. And what this does is, amongst other things, is it, it enables us to authenticate and identify students when they log into their Zoom account. So in the event that, you know, we do encounter one of these, one of these bombs, so to speak, Zoom bombs, that is, so to speak, we're able to, we have more options in terms of investigating and looking into who actually did it. And so really, the way it was explained to me by Mr. Santiago was that the protocols that have been put in place will prevent the casual novice hack or Zoom bomb. While they may not necessarily avoid the sophisticated hackers en tre, if you will, into the platform, they will, they will eliminate 99% of the casual hacking that might happen by our own, by our own students. That was the main one I was aware of, was the single sign-on. Mrs. Mendez, were there other features that you were aware of?
Sure. We sent out a tutorial to all of our staff for three additional strategies. So I think that 99% is going to come from the single log-on. But the feature that we put in the teacher's hands was to enable their waiting room. So what this does is that no one can come directly into the class. The teacher would have to admit each student one by one. And the teacher would be able to do so by viewing the student's name. And if that name is not recognizable to the teacher, then they would just not admit them to the class. So the teacher has the option to click "Admit" or "Remove." And so then at that, in, at that point, the teacher could just choose not to allow the student in. And then another strategy is also to be able to lock the meeting after all of the students are in. There is a feature, it's like a lock-your-door feature. So it's not one that we're using for an instructional strategy, but that one would be for security. So if that 1% did get in or tried to get in and you're seeing that they're trying to admit and you don't recognize the name, you could just lock the class and that bars anyone from getting into the classroom. And then there's also the remove feature. So if you remove someone, then they're no longer allowed into any of your meetings and we use those links, right? So now it doesn't just bar them from coming into that meeting, but it removes them from any of your upcoming, so they would be barred. And then the last strategy we gave them is that there is a way to exit someone and put them into the waiting room like a holding cell, right? And so then if, instead of just removing them, right, if they figure out a way to not allow you to remove, which is difficult, that would be that sophisticated hack that Dr. Cascone is referring to, you can bring them out into the waiting room. So then they kind of just stuck there, right? And then that gives us an opportunity to just email real quick and say, you know, there's someone in my waiting room. And then Zoom does record all of these. And so now with our licenses, we're able to have the recordings, it timestamps, it gives you IP address and all of those things. And so then Mr. Santiago and his team would be able to go back and to check and to see what's happening with our system. So in addition to that single log-on that should capture, capture most, these are some strategies that puts it right in the teacher's hands if it's happening and at that moment. And we sent out those tutorials, those videos to our staff earlier, or later last week.
That's amazing. Thank you. And I want to thank, you know, all of our staff because I've heard nothing, you know, outside of the few minor things like we just talked about, it's been mostly positive that I've heard. So I just want to recognize our staff and faculty for all the hard work that they're doing and your team. I am curious, though, with how the electives or our special, our specials are going. So like our arts and music, you know, I'm just wondering how those are running for our students because some of them do require, you know, from what we've previously known prior to the virtual world, to be hands-on. So I'm just wondering how, how works, how the experience has been going.
So at the elementary level, the electives just began this week. So today would have been the first day. So we can certainly come back to you with more detail around how this week went. I do know that there are some very cool strategies, if you will, that the teachers are trying. So one of them would be, for example, for instruments. The breakout rooms in Zoom can go, you can break out into 50 different rooms. And so then the way they're planning to use that is each student in a breakout room, they can practice their instrument and then the teacher can just hop between room to room to listen to that one student with their instrument. So these are some of the very unique strategies that our arts are going to be using. Virtual galleries, they started to use those last year, so they'll use those again. The use of the whiteboard on the drawing. So again, it started this week at the elementary level. We'll get some good reports from them to see how they did. And then we can come back to the next board meeting and let you know. And then the electives at the upper levels would be running just as any other period.
Great. Thank you so much. And like I said, it's been, you know, all positive and I appreciate the fact that West Orange has been ahead of the game with virtual learning. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Strickgill.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. I see what it's like going towards the end because everybody's asked the questions already, but I did save a few. I'd be a little bit concerned about the average daily attendance, which has to be reported. And we know there's a 10-day enrollment report that has to go to the state. So as parents are opting to not have their students attend during the day and to take care of that in the evening, I hope we're really, really making a concerted effort to reach out to express how important it is that they show up every day. With the parent survey, 964 responses, was that day one?
Week one.
Week one. So we know that's a very, very, very small sample out of 7,000, right? So will we be following up with something shortly?
Sure. Our intention is to do so. We do understand that week one was really just a temperature check as well because again, we're in how to use Zoom and routines and procedures and SCL. So as the content begins, then we'll send out another parent survey to see how now the content is, right? And how are we improving with our technology? So yes.
Right. And the asynchronous on Friday, I think that's really important that we're taking a look at that because I guess that kind of throws us back to what happened in the spring. And so as those four other days are working so well, I guess parents are, you know, please, please, keep the good stuff going. So I'm glad we're going to take a look at that. The Zoom, I've become a little bit familiar with that. And the kids are so, so savvy. And they will figure out how to get in the waiting room. So it's really important that the teachers are just letting in one at a time because we've had a few breaches. And although they needed a passcode to get in, some of their classmates are sharing the passcode and so they're getting in the waiting room. And then teachers are taking screenshots like, oh my God, look who's in the waiting room. So I really like that feature that you're talking about, that they can get locked in the waiting room. And so our tech staff can use their forensics to find out who it is. Because even though we're in a virtual world, we're not disciplinary and fraction-free. Our youngsters are very industrious and finding ways to always challenge. So that, that's good news that we have all those.
And Zoom also just has something else where if you click "Generate new password each session", literally it creates a new unique identifier for each new meeting, even if it's a reoccurring meeting or the same link, each time you enter, it will create a new one. So we're also, for that problem that you just described, Ms. Strickgill, we can employ that as a strategy as well.
Well, it's great that the tech staff met with the Zoom people. That, that was really a bonus. Thank you, Mr. Mendez and Ms. Gogarty Fitzgerald. How are you this evening?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, thanks. I think I want to just follow up a little bit about the 120 evals that started in the spring and are in process. Because we know that that involves meeting with parents and so that, that takes a long time. So how much time is wrapped around each evaluation, would you say?
So it really depends on, you know, the status of each evaluation. As I had shared earlier, we have some students who may just have one evaluation left, in which case we could wrap that up. We have prioritized, you know, in terms of looking at the evaluations, I think the initial evaluations are definitely a priority for us because we recognize that there are students who are at risk and we want to make sure that we identify them if there, you know, is in fact a disability and ensure that they have an IEP in place. We also have to take into account, we do have some parents' guardians who are not comfortable bringing the students in for evaluation still. So, you know, we're just kind of keeping them on hold if, if they're not able to come in in person for an evaluation. So it really is contingent upon, you know, each student and how many evaluations there are. You know, we have some students who, you know, we recognize that require immediate evaluation and, you know, they'll take priority as well. So the teams are working hard. The, the positive thing is when we, when we looked at the master list and we divided it amongst the buildings, it wasn't as many per building. So I'm hoping that the teams will be able to get through it. We are going to be meeting with them next week and getting a status update on the evaluations and where we're at with each student. And we'll maintain that, you know, we have a master list and then list by building. So we'll be updating that so we can monitor where we're at with the evaluations.
Great, thank you. Let's see if I can remember what the next question was. I think I was so busy listening to you, I forgot what the next question was going to be. But let's just say I want to thank everybody, the staff and administration, everybody, for getting this, this show on the road because the amount of planning that went into it, I can just imagine. And I know the last time we met, there was a lot of excitement because we had gotten it all together. And so now we have to be equally excited that the plan not only came together, we were able to implement it. And so thank you for, you know, trying to evaluate where we are at this point in time and just to be on that continuous improvement model and just getting better and better day by day. So kudos to everybody. And I'm sure the question will come back to me later. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you, Ms. Gogarty Fitzgerald. Just wanted to start with a comment, really just, I think echoing Ms. Strickgill's. Thank you for working so hard to, to get to onsite instruction. I know how very important that is to so many families in the special education community in our schools. And so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Ms. Mendez, just a couple of questions. So let's see, when, when students are, you mentioned that most of the problems had to do with Zoom and Chromebook and those were really the number one issues or tech issues. What is the, the main path for students and families to deal with those issues? Is the teacher troubleshooting or is it the school administration or district-level tech support? How are students reaching out for help?
So I think there's a multiple approaches that are being addressed here. I think from the technology department, we're really looking at, or that department is really looking at how Zoom interacts with Chromebooks and what workarounds there are to that compromise, right? Because there is an issue with Chromebook and Zoom. So they're trying to just troubleshoot and see how, how can we make those two more compatible, et cetera. If a parent or a student has an issue, they can fill out the form on our district website and ask for help from the tech desk. And then the teacher can do the same. So the teacher reports out via that same form to our tech desk. And so then we reach back out to the teachers to offer them support. On top of that, then we have our instructional technology specialists who really work. On top of that, then we have our instructional technology specialists who really work with strategies. So if there's something that comes up, such as enabling the waiting room feature, for example. We created, again, those little videos, tutorials, send them out really quick to the teachers via email. It's, we try never to be more than five to seven minutes long so that a teacher can quick see the video, understand the problem. And then we list out, these are the steps that you need to take. So we've sent out about three so far. Anything that comes up on our FAQ as priority, that all teachers are talking about, then we do a quick email to all faculty. So the tech department is working on the more complex issues, right? Integration with the platforms and then those forms, parents can fill them out and teachers do the same. And then those top, top things, then we send out an email with quick tutorials so that the teachers can troubleshoot and work through those right away.
Thank you. And yes, if a student or family is having an issue during class, if the teacher isn't able to resolve it quickly. Are they able to send the student over to tech support or forward a link to the form or?
Completing the link would be great and then the teacher can reach back out. And we do understand that did come up as a question on the parent survey. Would a student's attendance be affected due to technological issues? Absolutely not, right? If the student was booted out, for example, or if they experienced technical difficulty. As long as they just communicate with that teacher, then understood, right? That's certainly not on the student. They can go to their Google Classroom, they can make up the work, and then they can just submit it. And we'll continue to troubleshoot and make sure that that's resolved. There are some things that the technology department is looking at to help our parents with as well. And that might be, for example, not having the high definition on the camera, right? Maybe having the lowest resolution. Or if we're thinking about how many students are on a computer in a home, that might be tapping into the bandwidth. So I think some strategies and suggestions are going to be coming from the technology department to our families as well. Around some of the things that can be done. And then the things that are definitely just inherent to Chromebook, period. And there's nothing that we can do except look for an alternate or a hack, if you will, then we're going to have to do those internally.
Got it. Thank you. And then one last question, sort of flipping the tech support side of it from the teacher's perspective. If, I know there's been a lot of terrific training and, you know, again, commendations to the administration for all the support that's been given to teachers and preparing them for this. If a teacher is struggling with some issues, tech issues with the classroom. Is there a sort of a welcoming and friendly way for them to reach out for additional training and support? That would really encourage them to do this because obviously it's in the student's best interest for the teachers to be comfortable with the technology.
Absolutely. And at this point, it's all hands on deck. I mean, I do tutorials all day long, right, with staff and they reach out to myself, to Diana, to Tanya. We also have a team, an instructional technology team. There's at least one person in every building. That knows the technology that trained during the September training. We are going to, at some point, look to make suggestions for having one person permanent, right? In each building as just a go-to as a resource. Also, we're going to tap into our library media specialists and see if they can help us support. So I think the key is just having someone who's accessible by school, who knows the technology and can support, number one. Number two, we created a Google Classroom for Zoom. So I have just a Google Classroom just for Zoom and I upload all of our videos and our tutorials and our, and our quick, you know, tips. And strategies. And so all of our staff is invited to that Google Classroom. And it's like a, just a one-stop resource shop for all things Zoom. In addition to that, our instructional technology specialists will continue to work through the West Orange tech stack. So how do you use a puzzle? How do you use flip grid, right? All of those things will also be forthcoming to the staff for, again, the tutorials. Our afternoons, we can have PD, so we'll have a choice that'll be available to teachers soon. So we will start to set up a calendar now that we've opened and we're getting past, you know, week one and two. It'll be a menu, if you will, of different technology that's available. Or training around technology that's available and a teacher, if they would like to sign up on an afternoon or on a Friday, then they'll be able to do that. So that team is working on those opportunities as well. So we do have a nice, large team. Thank you to the board, to superintendent Ray, that we have that the staff can reach into.
That's great. Thank you so much.
All right, um, do we have a sense of, with the absences, you know, how many we're looking at that look like they're continual absences? Where it might point to, you know, a real technology problem or, you know, even I know sometimes, you know, over the summer, we lose some families. Some folks will, you know, move and not disenroll and we don't find out for a while, that sort of thing.
I'd have to get back to you on that. The only data that I could say is when we asked parents about the inability to log in, it was ten percent. So if we think about ten percent of the nine hundred and sixty-four that responded, that would be about the ninety-six, right? So, you know, if that's an indication, we'll continue to work through that. But I'll have to get back to you on some.
Just curious about people who, you know, we're missing completely and make sure that they're okay and, you know, get them the help they need if they're still here. I think that was all I had. You know, thank you, thank Kristen, you know, thanks, everybody who's been working on this. Our teachers for a phenomenal, I think, start to school, our principals, our staff and, you know, our parents. Because, you know, especially with younger kids, this is a real challenge. And, you know, I think people are doing remarkably well at keeping this all together.
Too, if I could just one more little data piece. We did put out a survey for parents in Spanish because our L's were a big concern last year. And we did have a close to sixty, I think, responses back just for our L's. And we had ninety-nine percent from that. It was, students are in, students are able to access, we're working through this better. So I think that is a significant data point for our Spanish-speaking families, right? That they were a very big concern with the ability to really navigate language and access the technology. So I think we've made some good, good, good improvement there. We'll certainly continue to reach out. That's not all of our families, right? So we will reach out to the rest of our families and just make sure that all of our families are able to access. But I also wanted to just mention that as a separate data point.
Great. All right, Dr. C.
Thank you, Mr. Alper and Mr. Mendez and Mrs. Gogarty. Thank you for all of your efforts and contributions to our cabinet. We'll, we'll keep you in the wings as there may be some questions during public comment that we may ask you to field. But at this time, I, oh, right, sorry. But at this time, I'd like to talk specifically about, about the ventilation issues. I will actually send out a message to the parent community, family community. Tomorrow with a link to this presentation with an encouragement to view it. And to listen to it so that you understand, have an understanding, rather, of the process that has brought us to the present day. And timeline for moving forward. As I mentioned in my initial remarks, I will also put together a written document that lays it out for you. A step-by-step and with the prospective dates so that you can have benchmarks for when you may expect. That we'll be able to commence the hybrid model. So I'd like to start just by talking about the various federal and state-level requirements. And guidelines that, that served as the impetus for the path that we, that we were. Really forced to take as related to ventilation. The CDC's guidance for business and employers responding to coronavirus disease two thousand and twenty. Directs that the evaluation of the building and its mechanical and life safety systems. Need to be evaluated in order to certify that the building is ready for occupancy. And this includes, but is not limited to the following. Ensure ventilation systems operate properly and provide acceptable indoor air quality for the current occupancy level for each space. Increase outdoor air ventilation using caution in highly polluted areas with a lower occupancy level in the building. This increases the effective dilution ventilation for person. Further open minimum outdoor air dampers as high as a hundred percent to reduce or eliminate recirculation. In mild weather, this will not affect thermal comfort or humidity. However, this may be difficult to do in cold or hot weather. And I just want to step aside for a second and talk about the dampers. When our architects came and presented on August twenty-fourth, they mentioned that some of our dampers don't necessarily function. As they did under the initial construction because of retrofits that have been made to the building, which have actually impacted and impeded the normal airflow. So in some cases, we're not actually able to do that with the current configurations of the buildings. And improve central air filtration to the MERV thirteen or highest compatible with the filter rack. And seal edges of the filter to limit bypass. It's tech speak. But basically, the most important thing is that it has to be a MERV thirteen or higher. Now, the New Jersey Department of Education checklist for the reopening of school two thousand and twenty-two-one includes the following requirement. Ensure that indoor facilities have adequate ventilation, including by maintaining operational heating and ventilation systems where appropriate. Ensuring that recirculated air has a fresh air component. Now, as you know, the commencement of the hybrid model was delayed until such time that the Board of Education Administration could certify compliance. With these federal and state guidelines and requirements. At the August twenty-fourth board meeting, a representative from EI Associates, the District Architect of Record, presented a situation report. On the district's HVAC deficiencies, as well as a proposed plan for remediation. And there were a number of key takeaways from that report. In district, there are a total of a hundred and thirty-eight spaces that are without mechanical ventilation. Forty-seven of those are classrooms and ninety-one of those are office spaces. Many of the existing classroom univent systems are too old to accommodate MERV thirteen filters or higher. Those are really the key, the key obstacles. Now, at the August thirty-first board meeting, I presented an update to the public on the proposed remediation plan. This would include installing air purification units in the classrooms and office spaces with windows. But without mechanical ventilation and BPI units or bipolar ionization units on all existing classroom univents. And rooftop units. At the September tenth Board of Education meeting, the Board of Education approved a proposal from EI Associates to conduct site walkthroughs. Of all the mechanical units to develop a parts list for quote. Each, and the reason for this is that each unit, depending upon its size and model, may require a slightly different BPI retrofit for it. So where are we now? Well, let's speak first about the air purification units.
Dr. Cascon, I'm sorry, something happened and we lost you as soon as you'd started that sentence. Just unplug and replug back in. We'll try that one.
How are we doing now?
There we go. That's good. Thank you.
So where are we now? Thank you, Ms. Grupthisa. So we purchased the air purification units, the EnviroCleanse UV model air purifier. Now, this purifier is equipped with filters, HEPA filters and the UV light. What we've done, and by doing this, we've saved sixteen hundred dollars per unit. Is that there is a retrofit, not unlike what we're doing with the univents and the rooftop units. But there's with an FC twenty-four BP bipolar ionization unit, which we could have installed onto the purchased unit. Okay, and again, this will serve, this will save sixteen hundred dollars per unit. Currently, the district has twenty-five of these purifiers in stock. We issued a PO on September twenty-first for an additional one hundred and seventy units. The expected delivery on these units is ten business days. The FC twenty-four bipolar ionization units were purchased from BB and Engineering. The district actually had one unit installed to ensure that the hybrid air purifier would work as designed, and it did. So the PO will be issued tomorrow, September twenty-second, for one hundred and ninety-four FC twenty-four units. So that we can retrofit these purifiers in order that they have HEPA, UV, as well as the bipolar ionization technology on them. The expected delivery date for these is four weeks with an arrival of ten twenty, October twentieth. The installation is to follow and the installation plan to take two weeks for a completion date of November second of this year. Meaning that we will be prepared to deploy those mobile units into the spaces that need them in advance of the November ninth date. The only potential hiccup in this plan is the supply chain. Now, our vendors have, have, have given us some pretty good assurance that the inventory is there. And that they should be able to ship within these timelines. Now, let's shift to the univent and rooftop unit installations. So tomorrow, by tomorrow, EI Associates, our architects, engineers of record, will complete the survey of all units needing BPI retrofits. Okay, and DMB Engineering, the same company that we're working with for the units for the purification devices. Will provide a quote for BPI units and installation by this Friday. PO will be issued on Monday, September twenty-eighth. The delivery time of this equipment is four weeks with an arrival date of October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Now, the installation of these may run concurrently with the delivery of the units. And this will expedite the installation of the equipment. The installation is expected to take two to three weeks, okay? And this is, and we're investigating installers to work multiple shifts and weekends to complete the work by November ninth. We will prioritize pre-K through five classrooms and work up. And so if all goes according to plan from the standpoint of supply chain. The, the, the previous date provided of November ninth will be, is still in play. And that will be two months from the approval of the proposal from the architects. To the completion of the project to have completed approximately a million two in HVAC remediation. Again, I will provide a written explanation of all that to the public so they can review it in their own time. And that is, Mr. Alper is my report on the ventilation situation. Happy to take questions from the board.
Sure. Can revert to normal order, Mr. Rothstein, anything?
Yeah, actually, no, no questions right now, I think, between the discussions in detail, previous meetings. And this wrap-up, I think I'm good. Thank you.
I'm actually good as well. Reading it might, might bring some questions, but I think that Dr. Cascon explained that very clearly. So thank you.
So I think this was all definitely very helpful in terms of meeting the November deadline. I'm just curious, how are we looking? So once all the ventilation issues are resolved, how are we looking at actually returning students into the schools? So do we know in regards to like PPE and the temperature checks, things like that? Will we be prepared with those types of items? I don't know if we've decided on putting up the barriers or, I know we have a lot of the signage around. That says about social distancing, at least outdoors we do, especially up at the high schools. So I'm just curious if we've thought or put any work into starting to do those types of things while we're waiting for these air. The ventilation issues to be resolved.
It's, it's an outstanding question. And I almost, in my preparation of the report, you know, we almost kind of touched upon that. But I can tell you that as far as, you know, our trainings, as far as our safety equipment. You know, the installation of our thermal screeners, you know, all of that is, is on, is on target. And I would expect that all those things would be in place no later than October first. Many of them already are. You heard Mrs. Gogarty talk about that. We do have some things that are still straggling in, in spite ordering them in July. You know, that are still coming in, but no question that, you know, by early October, we'll have all those things in place. So we're in good shape with that.
Awesome.
I don't think I have any questions at this time. Thank you. Sounds like a well-organized report.
Yep, very helpful. Thank you. All right, moving on, questions from the public on agenda items only. Three minutes on any topic, as long as it is a topic that is listed on tonight's agenda. When you come in, please, after you've raised your hand, please let us know your name and address and you'll have three minutes on the timer.
Thank you very much. Yes, as Mr. Alper mentioned, the raise your hand feature, if you're one of our call-in listeners. You can use star nine.
you can use star nine, you only have to press it once, it will put you right in the queue. Okay, first we have Felice or Phyllis Flitt. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, yes, this is Felice Flitt, 55 Bowland Drive. Just in anticipation of returning back to school in November, is there another survey that's going to be sent out to the families regarding their desire to return in person versus continuing virtual? Also, this is more of a comment, I guess, more than a question. First of all, I just want to thank everybody. Everybody has just done an extraordinary job. I have a middle schooler and a high schooler, and other than some very slight technological issues, it's really gone very well. But just regarding Power School, the high school schedule in Power School is correct, but the middle school is not. And I've already reached out to Ms. Coppola at Liberty and Mr. Santiago. Haven't gotten that resolved yet, so I was just wondering if there was somebody else I need to be reaching out to to get that fixed. And that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rhonda Powell, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Good evening, Rhonda Powell, 17 Club Boulevard. I'm interested in more information about the refunding, which comes up later on the, on the agenda with resolutions, and I'd like to know the selection process for both the law firm and for the advisor that were selected for the refunding. I understand that we've been with that law firm for a time. If someone could give some insight into how often our advisors and law firms are revisited and what are the criteria that we're using in the selection process for deciding who to go with, whether it's purely a financial matter or whether there are other considerations. I understand in this specific case, there are only a limited number of firms who do have that expertise, but I know that there are more than at least a dozen or two in New Jersey. So interested in some input and feedback on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Sheridan, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Thank you. So I just have a couple of questions.
I'm sorry, if we can just have your name and address for the record, please?
Oh, Samantha Sheridan, 67 Lawrence Avenue.
Okay, you're all set.
Great, thanks. So I just have a couple of questions. One is for the PPE, how long is it expected to last or the order, how much did you order? Is it for three months? Is it for six months? What was the expectation there? My other question is why I am seeing PE in our in-person instruction at the elementary school level? You know, it is not a very conducive environment to have a elementary school child that's hooked up to headphones, suddenly transitioned to PE, and it is just a video that's played out. So I don't understand why that can't be part of the asynchronous learning that happens in the afternoon. My other question is why we are only seeing arts happen once every two weeks and one day a week? Just wondering what that was, why that was happening. And then my only other question is with regards to Zoom. I just want to know why it was decided that Zoom was going to be the answer. I know that, you know, there are other districts that have gone with School G, if this was a financial reason or what the thought process was there. And then, you know, again, it's really the question as to when we would see Fridays become, you know, synchronous and not asynchronous, and that's it.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Rebecca Moses, if you can please follow the prompt on, okay, so. Okay, so Rebecca is using an older version of Zoom. I just need to promote her to a panelist really quick. Rebecca, I'm going to bring you over, don't touch anything on your screen. I'm going to turn your camera off when you come over, and then you'll be able to answer your question. Okay, so I'm just gonna stop your video there, and if you can follow the prompt on your screen to unmute.
Hi, Rebecca Moses, one Galloway Court. My questions are, we've been emailing the technology person regarding some of the issues and have not heard back. I'm curious as to when these concerns will be addressed. I'm curious as to when the gifted and talented program for second grade and below will be sort of restored. I know that that had been a question. Anything longer than nine to 12 for supervising the early elementary students is, in my personal opinion, slightly unrealistic. And we've had to do constant supervising because of the technology issues. The computers keep freezing, kicking kids off. So the afternoon block means that parents can't work because we have to do all of our supervising of kids in the morning. So my question is really regarding the, the related arts. My, my concern is that until we're back in the building, that afternoon block really sort of needs to go back to the parents. Since the technology issues are such as they are, it's difficult to ask parents to give up the entire day all the time. So I'm wondering if that can be optional or can wait until we're back in a hybrid mode. So I, I heard the comment that the classes are recorded and then put into the Google Classroom. I checked my child's Google Classroom, they are not there. So I'm wondering if that is actually happening and where those are located in the Google Classroom. I'm also wondering if that is a privacy concern. I have not signed anything that says that my child can be recorded. So that's a question that I have about that. There's a great onus on parents right now to make sure that, particularly with the early elementary kids, to make sure that everything is submitted correctly. As a more than full-time working parent with a partner who also works just as full-time, I don't feel that keeping up with art projects and PE, not to mention other specials, is a reasonable expectation. It's difficult enough to keep up with submitting everything correctly for the regular things. Again, I don't think that keeping up with the extras right now is a reasonable expectation to parents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just, I'm going to change your screen back over. Just don't do anything for one moment. Okay. And then we have next, Carol Anne Holland, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, this is Carol Anne Holland, 71 Lawrence Avenue. My biggest question is basically a repeat of what the previous speaker said. The Zoom recordings. My son woke up ill at three in the morning and was not able to attend in person this morning. I followed the procedure to call the attendance line, I assume that was correct. But then by the afternoon, he felt able to get on, but we were not able to find the recordings. He emailed his teachers and they seemed to indicate that they weren't available. He's an eighth grader, by the way. And said not to worry about it, we'll catch you up next time. Because he's a student with chronic illness and does tend to miss a lot, I would really love to have those recordings be available so that he can get his full instruction. I'd also like to say, even though he's in eighth grade, he thinks the four hours is pretty much long enough for him to sit still, even with the breaks. And my final thing, which I don't need to know tonight, but I am hoping that we will hear in future meetings more about how it will work when some kids go back and some kids stay virtual. Biggest concern is that the amazing quality of virtual instruction that we saw in the last week will decline once there are kids who are in person. I, I, I hope that the kids who stay virtual are not negatively impacted. But really, my biggest question was where can kids get access to the Zoom recordings of the classes that they've missed? That's it. Oh, and everyone's done an amazing job and overall, we are really thrilled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And the label on this person is N. Bell. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address.
Hi, my name is Nicole Bell, I'm at 31 Underwood Drive, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you all so very much, first of all, for all the hard work you've been putting in. We are new to the district this, this year, not new to town, but new to the district. And so we were very concerned about how we were going to make sure that we had all of our classes right and all of that, and everything went very smoothly last week, so I appreciate that. We only had one little blip with the technology being booted out of Zoom, but that was good. So I feel bad for all the parents who seem to have been having so much trouble. I feel a little bit bad about what I'm about to say because it totally contradicts what the other two people said before me, but I was actually hoping for a little bit longer schedule. But my children are older, obviously, than the first person who spoke who has the younger children, so it's hard to make everybody happy, and I'm sure it's harder for the younger kids and especially kids with special needs to sit longer. As a parent who works, it would be a whole lot better for me if my, my kids were sitting longer, because then I've got to find stuff for them to do in the afternoon. My second concern is not yet a concern for me, but I've heard a lot of concerns from high school parents who have kids who are in honors classes about the level of work they've already received, and even a few middle school classes about kind of the tone of teachers if work has been missed. I think some kids had, may have had some content work as opposed to just the social emotional development last week. And I am all for rigor, but I'm not a fan of work for the sake of work as opposed to rigor, especially since the kids have been home. So quote-unquote homework is kind of a misnomer right now since it's all homework. So I'm a little bit concerned about that while they are home. When they're back in school and they come home and they've got stuff they got to do, and they've been out and they've been socializing and all of that, that's one thing. But while they're home and they're stuck in front of a computer all day, to then have to spend hours and hours of homework afterwards and all day Friday and on the weekend, I'm a little concerned about that. Those are my two questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, do we have any other people who would like to have any questions on agenda items? It's using the Raise Your Hand feature at the bottom of your screen. Okay, thank you. Amy E., if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, yes, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for your time. This is Amy Epstein, 215 Clarkin Drive. Just had a question about core content instruction. We have a first grader in kindergarten. We were very happy in the spring with the Google Slides and how we were getting core content instruction every single day, whether it was, you know, taped Google videos or one-on-one meets with our teacher. And now, looking at the schedule for first grade, what concerns us a little bit is that the core content instruction is not being delivered every single day. I know that it's only the second week of instruction. I know that we still have to get into the nitty-gritty of instruction, but what I'm finding right now in looking at the schedule, it really just has math every other day, ELA every other day for four days only. And then we have social studies alternating with science as well. So I'm just wondering if someone can touch upon the background as to why it was decided just to have the twice-a-week math and twice-a-week ELA, which are standardized instruction to have normally every single day? That's my question. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, final call for agenda items. For our call-in patrons, it is star nine, and it's the Raise Your Hand feature. Thank you. Sandra Mordecai, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Sure. Hi, Sandra Mordecai, 516 Pleasant Valley Way. Thank you all for all your hard work. I have a question about, I, I guess I wanted to find out when the district strategic plan process will begin. I noticed on the agenda and your budget goals, you refer to that, and that's one question. And the bond that's currently on this agenda, I noticed that it was on the last agenda as well, unless this is another bond for the same 19 million. And finally, Mr. Siggy, he was also on the last agenda. And on this agenda, it looks like he's going to have an annual year-to-year contract while staying in the Supervisors Union, but I believe the last agenda, it said that he was coming out of the Supervisors Union because you, yeah, I, I know he's a director, so he should still be in the Supervisors Union. So I'm confused as to what you're doing, because he's been on two agendas in a row with two different things, and it doesn't say rescission. So if you could please explain that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And the final, final call for public items. Unfortunately, Amy, it's only one person, you only get to speak one, one at a time. There's going to be another time at the end, thank you. Okay, that seems to be it.
All right, Dr. C., all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Thank you to all our community members who attended tonight and raised some excellent questions. I will, I will hit a number of them. I have kind of flagged some that I'd like Mrs. DeMendez to focus on, but I will go through, and then I will kind of lateral the ball, if you will, to Mrs. DeMendez. Relative to the middle school schedule, I'm certain that, you know, Mrs. DeMendez will make note of that and follow up with the middle school team. We are actually scheduled to have principal meetings tomorrow, so we can bring that up as an agenda item and find out what the snafu is with that and get it rectified very quickly. As far as the virtual opt-out, that is a, the form is still live, and we've, we've essentially maintained that as kind of an open and rolling form. As we get closer to the deadline by which we would want to know that, we will announce that, but for the time being, you know, parents, caregivers, guardians can continue to kind of weigh their options, if you will, and, and weigh in with that when they are, when they are prepared. But we will provide updates as the deadline for filling that out gets closer. As far as the PPE goes, we have approximately 60,000 masks, you know, in stock. PPE does not really seem to be at the shortage level. We're bombarded on a daily basis with vendors that are selling PPE. The approach that we intend to use, both with staff and with students, is that students are welcome to, 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 to wear and to bring their own masks from home. And for students who are in need of masks, then we are prepared to provide masks to student, students on an as-needed basis, or if over the course of the day, something happens to the mask that they, that they have. But we have ample for the time being and have vendors with whom we can order additional. We don't want to end up in a situation where we have stockpiles of masks and we've thrown good money after bad money, particularly with the financial constraints under which we're operating. But we will evaluate that early on and determine if and when and how much we would need to order additionally. I'm going to ask Mrs. DeMendez, I'm going to kind of make note of the ones, but just kind of, so if you'll make note of them on your end, and then you can kind of hit them after I've concluded. I'll ask Mrs. DeMendez to address the, the PE question from Ms. Sheridan, as well as the arts every two weeks. Interesting, obviously, as we see, and as Ms. Bell noted, you know, there, there are such different perspectives, and, and they all have merit, right? They could be argued equally effectively either way. But I'll ask Mrs. DeMendez, take the related arts question insofar as why every other week, and then also from the standpoint of having those continue. The synchronous versus asynchronous on Friday, I think Mrs. Merklinger raised that question and earlier, and we are going to reevaluate that after the second week, and we are open to making adjustments if that is deemed as an inappropriate course forward. We're not set in stone with the, the current allocation of time. Relative to recordings, I would say that that is definitely another item on which we will, I'm sure Mrs. DeMendez will be following up on that to understand, is that a, is that an aberration in those cases? Is there a communication issue on our side? Is there a technical issue on our side? Maybe a little bit of both, but I would agree that those need to be available to students. Now, in terms of the board policy relative to photos and things of that nature, because, because our Google Classrooms are closed systems, meaning that only students within that classroom and the teacher within that classroom has access to that content, it is different than, say, for example, if we it is different than, say, for example, if we were going to tweet that picture out or to publicize that video out, you know, on the internet. And so under our current board policy and under the current acceptable use policies, that is permissible. That being said, if you had a specific concern about that, I would ask you to refer that to your building principal and we can work through you with any concerns that you have about that. I will ask Mrs. DeMendez to handle the question on gifted and talented. Right, so as far as how the hybrid will work, it's an excellent suggestion. And I definitely think that as we get closer to the commencement of the hybrid date, we will absolutely provide forthcoming updates and kind of nuts and bolts what that will look like. I can tell you, and it's a fair point, we wouldn't want what we're doing virtually to be impacted. And certainly, there are more moving parts for a teacher in the classroom trying to manage a platform with students on it and students in the classroom. What I can tell you is that our onboarding of staff members will precede that of the commencement of the hybrid model. And during that onboarding, that advanced onboarding, we will be providing an additional round of PD specifically for the purpose of providing training for teachers on how to manage that hybrid classroom and the webcams and so on and so forth. Relative to, you know, the tone, we have really administratively really led and trained and leaned into, as Mrs. DeMendez might say, this idea of tone and SEL. And so, you know, we wouldn't want that to be the case. And so that is a message that we can reinforce. It's hard to imagine that there would be. And with all due respect to the importance of rigor, that there would be a lack of sensitivity on the part of our educators at this point in time as they're interacting with students. So that is absolutely something that we've talked about, we've let into that. We've let into that administratively with our staff. And so certainly, the expectation across the board would be that the same way that we'd be treating our students. So we'll be sure to reinforce that message, you know, where and as appropriate. So we appreciate you bringing that to our attention. I'm going to ask Mrs. DeMendez to handle the question about core content instruction. But I can give you a foreshadowing to the answer, which is that is that, because that is in essence, is compatible with our hybrid model when we move into that. And so that's been one of our approaches, has been that we're not creating a different schedule during virtual and then having to, you know, go back and then have a different schedule to which students need to be accustomed when we get to hybrid. So we've kind of kept that same schedule. But I ask Mrs. DeMendez to delve a little bit more deeply into that. Thank you, Ms. Mordecai, relative to the strategic plan. We were administratively, we were waiting the board to finalize their board goals. You can expect that in very likely in the first meeting in October, we will approve the district goals. And one of those district goals will be, in fact, the evaluation of our strategic plan and a revision as appropriate and necessary to the action steps in that plan so that we can get back on track with that. And potentially, the extension of the length of that plan due to really the loss of much of last year to be able to accomplish those things. So that will be one of the district goals and we will get working on that ASAP administratively. Relative to Mr. Ziggy, the motion on the previous agenda was a sidebar with the, between the board and the West Orange Administrators Association, which essentially was the WOA's authorization agreement to have Mr. Ziggy's position removed from their association. When Mr. Ziggy was removed from that association and as such, no longer covered, if you will, under the collective bargaining agreement of the WOA with the board, what this motion is, is this is an unaffiliated contract, not unlike Mr. Calavano, Dr. Vesbignani, myself, Mrs. DeMendez, Mrs. Gogrit, or any other central office administrator would have. In the absence of the CBA of the WOA, which previously covered Mr. Ziggy's employment, this is an unaffiliated contract. Now, you mentioned the idea that it still says the Westwood Administrators Association. I'm not exactly sure what you're alluding to, but he's in fact no longer in the WOA. This is his individual unaffiliated contract, which is being approved. I believe that covers my questions. At this time, I would turn it over to Mrs. DeMendez, if you would, you know, touch upon those questions I mentioned.
Sure. With regard to physical education and the elementary, we thought it important to integrate movement into the day. The students are seated minimally from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We certainly heard also from many parents the concern around the screen time or sitting down for such a long or prolonged period of time without movement. So what we've done is we've incorporated 10 minutes of movement per day. So instead of the full PE period, we thought it appropriate to have the 10 minutes of movement. I do understand that the audio is of a concern to you, so we will look into the audio. What that might look like is that the PE teacher does have a video on how to wash your hands in a safe way for our little ones, right, kindergarten? And so then we're counting to 20, we're singing to have your birthday. It could be that they're standing up to do some type of movement activity or jumping jacks, any type of activity to get them out of their seat, maybe looking away from their screen periodically for 10 minutes, a short amount of time, to get moving. With regard to the arts, the arts, art specifically, music, library, are held one time per week. One week it's synchronous and the other week it's asynchronous. The student experience would be two of their related arts classes per week on the same day. So if it's a Monday, I may have art and music on that Monday in my related arts block. Why do we have it just once a week? Our teachers in those areas in the related arts have a very large number of students that they're responsible over. It could be anywhere from 80 to, or 60 to 80 students. And so then, in order for a teacher not to have 60 students in a class, then we would have to cohort that or break that up. And so then the teachers are seeing students every day, but the students in their schedule, in order for us to effectively rotate those students at a manageable class size, then we are looking at providing that related arts experience at least one time a week, two content areas, two related arts areas per week. In addition to that, they have the world language. And then one week it is synchronous and the other week it is asynchronous so that they can rotate through the different related arts. With regard to the recording, I think Dr. Cascon did, he spoke to that already. We will check up on that. All teachers should be uploading in their Google classroom the direct instruction component. And I just want to emphasize that. So that's the part where the teacher is doing the direct teaching. That's not the part where there's small group instruction. It's not the part where there's Q and A. It's not the part where students are involved and interacting. It's just the teaching. And so then it would be the teacher directly uploading their content. With regard to core content instruction being held twice per week, yes. And so here we have a few things that we had to consider. So let's think about our elementary students and they're getting all virtual content. They're getting it in larger blocks, right? So our ELA may be, for example, an hour and a half, our math, an hour and a half. And then we have our social studies and our science. What we looked to do, what we sought to do was to make sure that students did not have all of their content area every single day. Because then our screen time, right, our day would be a very long day. And we broke that out so that students could focus on the ELA for their block, a good block of time where they could accomplish the reading, the writing for our K2, their foundations, and then their other content area, whether it be social studies or science that it was paired with. We thought that that would be reasonable for the students to really focus on two content areas per day and then, and switch, you know, switch over. We experienced in the March through June that when the students had all of their content area and one day, it was overwhelming. It was overwhelming, especially for our little ones. And so then that's the reason we decided to really just consider how much content the students were getting in one day virtually. Also, all of the schools and the research that we really looked into, that was a huge suggestion to not take it all on one day. However, Dr. Cascon did speak to the Friday and we are going to observe the use of the Friday for the next two weeks, see if that's something that we would reconsider. And if so, then we could add another synchronous day of instruction to make sure that we offer additional, an additional day of synchronous content. With regard to gifted and talented, our grades three through five started this week. And the younger grades, K through two, for the first half of the year in particular, are observed first and then they're offered services. And so we want to allow our students that time here in this model as well. We observe, we offer the enrichment, and then we determine if they are going to receive that additional block of time. Now, I do want to say with gifted and talented, though, for those younger areas, those younger grades, that in the afternoons, parents will see that enrichment blocks open up and the parents, the students are able to enter into those enrichment blocks in the PM schedule. So that should be coming out shortly and those are open to any parent who wants to take advantage of enrichment. But specifically to our K2 parents who are seeking that gifted and talented enrichment opportunity, those blocks will begin to open up in the afternoons. We wanted to get our related arts schedule off the ground, get our three to five up and running. And then we will add our enrichment blocks in and continue to observe students before pulling them from class to receive gifted and talented.
Thank you, Mrs. DeMendez. And Mr. Calavano, would you mind taking Ms. Powell's question regarding board council, bond council, rather?
Sure. So the two firms we have on the agenda this evening, one is Phoenix Advisors for the Financial Advisor and McManus Scotland and Baumann, and they're our bond counsel. We probably had both firms for about five years now. We don't really use both firms, or at least the bond counsel. We only use a bond counsel when we refund bonds or if we're going, you know, have a referendum. Same thing with the Financial Advisor. We would use them for refunding and referendums. But there's also certain filings that are required during the year. So they are used on an annual basis. I would think in the next three years, we would probably go out for an RFP for both the bond counsel and financial advisor. And when we look at an RFP, what we would evaluate would be, obviously, the rates, experience with districts our size, qualifications of members of the firm, and also past experience with West Orange. And I can tell you that I am more than pleased with both firms, with the performance. Never had any issue with them. They're prompt, they're exact, and they're available for any time we have a question on anything that we may be looking at or preparing. So, and Mrs. Mordecai, regarding your question with the bond ordinance, you are correct. September 10th was our first reading of the bond ordinance. It takes two readings. After we had the September 10th, we had a post, a public hearing in a newspaper and then give ample time, you know, prior to the board meeting. And now this evening, we will open up at a certain point in the meeting for any public comment and then close and then approve at a second meeting. And that should be the final step for our refunding.
Thank you, Ms. Calavano. And Ms. Alper, I think that concludes for us.
I think so. Thank you. All right, moving on, may I have a motion for second reading and adoption of the as-is board policies on attachment two?
A motion.
Second.
Would there be any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tunncliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, may I have a motion for personnel items one through four?
So moved. Second.
All right, I'll note a retirement we have tonight, Carla McKee from Transportation after 30 and a half years. Congratulations on that. Any further discussion on personnel? Seeing none.
Yes.
Ms. Rothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tunncliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. All right, next, curriculum and instruction, item one, may I have a motion?
So moved.
And seconded.
Any discussion?
Yes, can we just get an explanation for the public's benefit? Please, Mr. Calavano.
Purpose for the revised proposal was to increase the amount of I-ready licenses from $25,000 to $26,550. The reason for this was that since we submitted the proposal in August, we had to increase the number of licenses to accommodate new students entering the BSI intervention program and additional students who have been recommended by their teachers for services. The original PD amount was for $3,000, but we are now adding an additional $1,500 for the teachers who will be working with Edison's academic support students.
Thank you.
Right.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tunncliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay, next, finance. Let's start with a motion for special services, items one through four, and business office items one and two.
So moved. I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on those items?
Yes, business office number two. Why the change there?
From our bank that we're using for the student activity account, we're being assessed various fees. If we move the account to PNC, where all our accounts are being held, those fees are waived.
So it's a savings?
Yes.
That's always good. Thank you very much.
Do we have any other student activity accounts or anything from other buildings that might be at PNC that could benefit from that?
No, I believe they're all with PNC right now.
Good, sort of a holdover then. All right, great. Let's vote.
Ms. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Yes.
Ms. Tunncliff?
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales?
Yes.
President Alper?
Yes. Okay, now we're going to skip ahead to item five, the public hearing for the bond ordinance. At this point, we will turn it over to Mr. Calavano, who can explain what we're doing. And then we'll have public comment only on the bond ordinance, and then following that, we'll continue.
Okay, so we have an opportunity to refinance some of our outstanding 2012 refunding school bonds. And why they're refunding school bonds? Because we originally, back in 2003, we had a bond referendum for $31,535,000. That was for the construction of Liberty Middle School in additions to seven elementary schools, elementary and middle school. So that's, those are 2003. At 2012, we were able to refund some of those bonds. Now, we're at a point in time that we can actually refund some of the 2012 refunding bonds. So the average interest rate of the 2012 bonds is 3.38%. The average interest rate on the projected 2020 bonds is 1.70%. So we're projecting a total debt service savings, approximately $88,750 per year for a total of $710,000. All these costs that are associated with this refunding are coming from the, it'll be built into the total of the bonds. And we are actually required by the state through the accountability regulations that if there's a calculation for savings, if we can achieve a certain percentage of savings, we must go for the refunding. If we don't go for the refunding, they can actually withhold state aid from the district. So this is where we are this evening. We open up the floor now for public comment, we'll close, and then we'll take action on the resolutions. Hey, Mr. Alper.
Okay, all right. Okay, it's the same deal as with the other things. It's the raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen, or if you're one of our call-ins, it is *9. And Rhonda Powell, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, Rhonda Powell, 17 Club Boulevard. I just wanted to be clear on whether the savings are savings that are net of the fees that we are paying to the advisor and to the law firm, or whether those are gross savings as calculated and expressed?
Okay, thank you.
And I was muted there. I will admit to when I forget to unmute. Uh, do we have anyone else, uh, for this, um, refunding bond ordinance? Okay. That seems to be it.
All right. Uh, Mr. Calavano.
They are net savings.
All right. So may I now have a, uh, man out of the, uh, motion for items. Four, six and seven.
I'm sorry, Mr. Alper.
Yes, sir.
Before we move on, I just wanted to ask Mr. Calavano.
Sure.
Repeat the savings figure. Was it, was it a total expected savings of 700,000? Is that what you said?
710,000, correct.
Thank you so much.
All right. And I think I actually missed one. So we need a, uh, motion for items three, four, six and seven. However, one, uh, program note. On item seven, which is attachment eight on page 10, uh, the resolution misstates the name of the board's auditor. It is Lurch, uh, Vinsey and Higgins and not what was listed on page 10 of that. So with that change, may I have a motion for items three, four, six and seven?
Our motion.
And seconded.
Any discussion? All right. Seeing none.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mr. Tonnecliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right. Up next, uh, may I have a motion for miscellaneous item one, uh, the board goals.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Calavano.
This is Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mr. Tonnecliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right. Uh, public comment now on any topic at all. Uh, once again, you'll have three minutes and Lauren will walk you through it.
Uh, again, it's the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. And if you had wanted to, I believe it was Amy last time, had wanted to, um, speak again, this is the time that you can raise your other question if, if it hadn't been answered already. So Carol Anne Holland, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, Caroline Holland, 71 Lawrence Avenue. Forgive me, I forgot this in my last comment. And it doesn't directly impact my kids, so I thought someone else might bring it up. I just wanted you all to be aware. In case you're not, that there are kids, so the high school kids who have labs, that's the one synchronous thing they're doing on Friday. And there are, um, several kids, especially kids in AP sciences who have several labs. And because they're attending synchronous labs, they then have a very difficult time getting their asynchronous work done. For the day by 2:15. Um, I, I've just heard a lot of seniors, especially. Were a little stressed last week, um, about how they were going to manage to get all their work done. When they had, you know, three labs or more to do in one day. So that was all. I just wanted to make sure you were all aware of that. Maybe Mr. Moore has already heard from parents and it's taken care of. But it, I think it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Aaron Kesselman, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Yes. Hi, this is Aaron Kesselman, One Galilee Court. Just had a couple of follow-up questions to ask. Regarding Chromebooks, uh, do we know if the Zoom issues are related to the Chromebook or Zoom itself? I've been using, last week I had my daughter use, uh, the district issued Chromebook and we had a lot of issues with being kicked out. Screens freezing up, going black, et cetera. Decided to use the Chromebook we purchased because we didn't know if the district was going to have Chromebooks in time. This week and we had, you know, this is the first day using it and maybe one or two times where she was kicked out, maybe the screen went black. But not nearly as many tech issues as there were when using a district issued Chromebook. So do we know yet where those issues are lying and are those correctable? Because. As a working parent, I can't be going back and forth and resetting the computer and making sure she's on Chrome or on Zoom at the time. Another question is, it seemed to be that for the younger kids, especially maybe the, the K through two, K through five, whatever cohort. There's a lot of onus on the parents to submit all the work because our kids don't know how to submit it right. We try to show them. We have to make sure that we're submitting it in time or submitting it correctly so that they are counted either present or that their work is graded. Thirdly, my daughter was actually selected for enrichment or whatever you call it in, in, I guess, first grade. And so is that continuing? That was the other question that my wife and I had was, how is that working for them in this? And atmosphere that we're in right now? And maybe it's not gifted, but enrichment, but is that still continuing to foster? Those, you know, her abilities. Cause she's bored. She's sitting at the computer with her earphones on, twirting, doodling. And while the teacher is, is, is there, and I can't tell when, when the teacher has earphones on or when she has her earphones on, rather, our daughter, without she's actually learning. And I want, I want to make sure she's learning and that she enjoys what she's doing and I can't tell if she is. And I think there are a lot of parents out there probably feel the same way. So again, this is all new to us. And again, I thank the board and all the teachers and staff for doing what they're doing. But it's still a learning process for all of us and frustrating. So please, you know, we're bearing with you. Please bear with us if we have questions about this. Thank you.
You. Okay. And do we have anyone else at this time, um, on any subject?
Love me.
And no one else has raised their hand.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Drouper. Um, and thank you, Mr. Kesselman. Um, I, in, in Mr. Kesselman's, uh, comments, it actually triggered my, my memory. That there had been a. Somebody's not muted and it's causing. Okay. I think that's better. I forget who it was, had raised the question about, um, Zoom and the decision to go with Zoom. So I'd like to spend a couple of minutes just talking about that. So there was a critical decision point that happened relatively late in the summer. And, uh, one thing that I, you, my team and the board, uh, knows about me is I'm not a, you know, a, a, a switch horses and midstream guy. I don't make big decisions quickly typically. Um, and when I do, I, I give them a lot of thought and consideration. And so, and so with Zoom, we knew that we wanted to have a video conferencing platform. And by the way, I know there was a mention of Schoology. Schoology is, is a, is a learning management system. It's not a video conferencing technology. It's a learning management system within which a, a district's tools reside. But within Schoology, ultimately a school district that using, that is using Schoology is either using, uh, Google Meets, uh, Zoom, WebEx. Or something of that sort. Um, but the reasoning was, is that, you know, we, we knew that we wanted to roll out our year. With a platform that enabled teachers to, to, to create more dynamic virtual environments, small meeting rooms and things of that nature. Google Meets presently does not have that option, though they are telling us that they're putting some stuff out in beta and we might expect it by early October. We just don't know. Um, and, and we knew that just simply having a static platform with Google Meets where everybody was on the same screen. You couldn't even necessarily see everybody was not going to enable our teachers to deliver the kind of virtual instruction and learning that our students deserve. And that our parents would want for their kids. Um, I asked some critical questions at that decision point relative to. Anything that we might need to know about Zoom and complications. Uh, we knew that there were potentially some, that there had been some security issues, but we. Were assured that many of those had been taken care of. And in fact, they have been. The few issues that we had early on last week. Have been rectified by the measures that were described earlier in the meeting by Mrs. Mendez. That being said, I have been very clear and explicit with our technology department. That they need to commit every resource to understand what the issues are and are they, can we remediate them? Or, and/or can Zoom remediate them? We will use, um, metrics to make a determination, I would argue sooner rather than later. Whether or not this is something that we can fix or whether we could expect that parents would continue to have issues throughout the year. If it's the latter, well, then we can, we can pivot because by that time, uh, we've, at presently, we've enrolled in Google's early. Implementation program so that we can start to understand what their meeting room features will look like. And if we need be. It would not be ideal, but we can pivot and move into Google Meets once they have, uh, implemented these features. We're looking at this daily. We're dialoguing daily with Zoom to try and understand this. Some have hypothesized that it's a processing speed issue. Some have hypothesized that it is our security, um, our filtering, our security filtering. Rest assured, I've been very clear and explicit with technology. All resources and expertise need to be committed to this in the immediate term. To understand and fix it. If it's not fixable, then we need to come up with, with an alternative plan. You know, one final thing I would just, I would just close on for this particular question is, is, you know. Over the course of the summer, we had a, a, a relatively, relatively small team of people, including myself. Who were really the primary touchpoints for parents. We had, you know, building administration to, to some extent as well, but. For the entire summer and still to the state, which is absolutely appropriate. People were really looking to a very small group, core group of people. To provide the support, you know, and that hands-on, right? Now we have the benefit as of September 3rd to have 800 strong in the fight in our teachers. And so it's not to say I'm here for every single parent. You email me, you'll get a response. You want to have a phone conversation, we'll have a phone conversation. Happy to do that. But I also want you to leverage the vast expertise and resources that are available to you. I, as far as the person who had trouble getting through to technology, um, I, I know that our technology department is working very diligently to get back to every person. In fact, I have an email in my inbox now, a complimentary email from a parent, um, with whom I've been dialoguing and some things that they're not particularly happy with. But in this particular case, he was very pleased with the prompt service that he got from technology. So, um, you know, I'm certain that they will get back to you as soon as they can. But utilize this, the vast resources you have at your disposal as parents. Teachers are, are fantastic initial contact point. In particular, you're having difficulty getting the homework in, you know, because of work schedule. Listen, we, just like we are being with our staff, we are being with our students, we're being with our parents, understanding, accommodating. Let's keep the lines of communication open and we're willing to work with you and understood, Mr. Kesselman, we're in this together and we're learning together. So we appreciate the, uh, the feedback. Thank you.
And you guys are on it with the labs.
I'm going to ask Mrs. Mendez to look into that and, um, you know, if Mr. Moore is not already aware, but I, I think that that's. And I appreciate Mrs. Holland's, um, feedback on that because that sounds like a pretty valid concern to me. And we know that, uh, our high performing students, you know, uh, tend to put in an order, an amount of pressure on themselves. So we want to make sure that we're being mindful of that. So thank you for that.
Yep. All right. Uh, board member reports. Mr. Rothstein, anything?
Yes. Thank you very much. Um, well, for starters, I just wanted to, um, to give an appreciation to our teachers this week. For your efforts to make this unusual academic year work. Uh, no matter what work is being done by the administration and by parents to. Prepare students and prepare, um, everyone for this year. When it comes right down to it, um, education happens with a spark in that interaction between teachers and students. And, um, in the end, you are the ones, you teachers are the ones who will, um, turn this challenge into a success. And so as with every school year, it's a heavy burden, um, but it's also the opportunity, uh, that attracts so many amazing people to this profession. So thank you and good luck. Um, to the administration. I appreciate that I've heard so much enthusiasm about the possibilities this year. I think our students deserve whatever other issues we're all struggling with and facing. And we're struggling with and facing a lot of issues. The students deserve to see this as, as a year of opportunities and possibilities. And I'm hearing so much enthusiasm for, from our administration and from the faculty, and I really appreciate that. Um, I'm also hearing from the administration sympathy, um, to the hardships that many in our community are dealing with. And so I appreciate that. Uh, and also an openness to suggestions as we just heard from Dr. Cascone. All of the right notes to be hitting in my opinion. And so thank you and please keep us moving forward. I wanted to note and mourn the passing of Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. I'm hoping that all of our students and especially the young women in our school district. Will be inspired by her intellect, her integrity and her sense of justice and also her spirit of dissent. And finally, um, Shana Tova, Happy New Year to all in our school district and town who are celebrating the Jewish New Year. I'm really hoping along with all of us that this year is going to be the turning over of a new leaf and, uh, that we'll see things start to look up. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Alper.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Trig Scales.
Thank you, Mr. Alper and, um, Mr. Rothstein.
Mr. Trig Scales, I'm sorry. Can you just push down your, your microphone is sticking straight up.
How would I not know that? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Alper. And I just want to just say to Mr. Rothstein, he said everything beautifully. So, um, thank you, thank you, thank you. Just want to also recognize that it's, uh, National Hispanic Heritage Month. And, uh, so we're hoping that, um, we are learning so many valuable things about the contributions. Of that segment of our population. And all of the contributions that they have certainly made, uh, to our country. Voter registration. Just wondering, uh, Dr. Cascone, what we might be doing at the high school for our 18-year-olds, making sure that they are exercising. Their right to vote. And, um, that question that escaped me earlier was the percentage of teachers who are actually. Working on site in our, in our buildings. We know that they had an option, uh, to do that. And I just want to thank my fellow board members. We, we just passed a huge chunk. Of policies and I think we should pat each other, um, or ourselves on the back. We can't touch each other. So. We'll pat ourselves on the back. Um, we are, we are moving in a wonderful direction. It, it has seemed like it's taking a long time and it is taking a long time, but, um, we're getting there. So I'm, I'm just really, really happy that we were able to do that. And I think that's it. Again, kudos to everyone for a successful first week of school.
All right. Ms. Merklinger.
Uh, I definitely echo Gary and Terry's sentiments for our appreciation of the faculty and our staff. And, and you know, definitely our students who are, are taking this and, and running with, um, this new platform. So definitely kudos to all of them. But I also want to thank our parents as well in the community. Um, I know this is a tough time for a, a lot of us trying to balance work and, and. Being engaged with our children, um, who are, you know, new to the virtual platform. So we recognize you as well. And just note there are resources. Um, and if you are feeling that stress, you know, September is, um, mental health awareness month. So if you do have, um, any concerns or anything that's stressful bothering you, we do have those resources. Cheryl Butler, um, and our SAC counselors and, you know, there's just a multitude of resources available. So I would, you know, definitely reach out to your building principals, guidance counselors, um, if you are feeling that, that stressful, um, situation. I just want to point out that, uh, this week starts our virtual back to school nights. I think this is going to be pretty neat with, uh, clicking into classrooms and then getting to meet the teachers. I think we start off with our elementary schools, uh, tomorrow, the 22nd, followed by Edison on the 30th. Liberty and Roosevelt on October 1st and the high school on October 6th. So definitely look forward to hearing how those go. Sounds pretty neat what we're going to do this year. And not having to race around the schools themselves. So I think this will be pretty neat. Um, and I just want to also recognize. If anyone's been up at the high school, uh, recently, it's really great to see, um, some return to normalcy up there. It's been great. If you see, you know, there's baseball going on at Degnan Field and softball. It's been great, if you see, you know, there's baseball going on at Degnan Field and softball, there's soccer going on, our football team, our marching band's been on the 80-yard field, and all of our student athletes and coaches are doing so great with the social distancing, the masking, so it's just great to see some normalcy back and getting back to some of our normal routines, and wishing our soccer teams and our football teams good luck this week, as they all have scrimmages on Thursday, and look forward to hearing about the season. Thank you.
Right, Ms. Tunncliff?
It's always hard going last, because there's, a lot of people have said some of the things that I would have said, so I won't belabor the point. I will just thank everybody again for a great start to the school year. I'm looking forward to seeing how this year plays out, and thank all the parents and students and teachers and staff who have made a good effort the last couple of weeks, and I wish you all a good night, and thanks to the parents who came on board tonight and asked a lot of questions. We appreciate it, and we appreciate your feedback, so have a good night.
All right, and yeah, I'll reiterate what everyone before me said, and again, thanks to our teachers, our staff, our principals, and of course, our parents and our students who are, you know, getting it done. This weekend, Saturday, I was able to go to the St. Baldric's event, it was smaller than it was in the past, and as you can see from our heads, Dr. Cascon did not make it this year, but a prior commitment, but I got shaved and raised a little bit of money, which was, which was good to do. You know, it's nice to start getting back into the swing of things. And I'll throw out a plug that on Thursday, the 24th this week, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., the Football Boosters are running a Fish Fry fundraiser, you can find that on Facebook and get all the specifics, and I think you can place a preorder that way, there's an email address in there. So, and that's ahead of their scrimmage that they're gonna have on Thursday. With that, I think we are done, our next meeting will be right here on the internet again at 7:30 p.m. on October 5th, we'll see you there, and we're adjourned.